I would like to welcome everyone here today in our viewing audience to the October 8th meeting of the City of Danport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is James Reistroffer, Chairman. To my right is Angela Leibach. And present is Lynn Cochran on the telephone. And is Tom, he hasn't called in yet, has he?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And Tom Quinn will be here shortly. Staff President Scott Coops and Attorney Mallory Hoare. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-member adjudatory board established by state law. We are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardship from strict application of the current zoning laws. We also grant special uses in the rule on administrative appeals. Thank you. Are there any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? I guess seeing none. I ask for a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Can I get a second?
Lynn, did you hear that?
Yeah, I can hear it. I was at the last meeting though, so...
Lynn, can I get a second on the motion to approve the minutes?
Sure. I'm still moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Okay. Aye. And there's no old business, and we'll wait till our other board member comes for the new business.
Mr. Quinn?
Thanks to our audience members for being patient while we figured this out. You did talk to him at one time. I thought you spoke with him.
Oh yeah, earlier I got ahold of him. Then I told him to call the council chair's phone number. I texted him the phone number as well, yeah. And we emailed him as well.
Yes, I am.
Good, good. We're still trying to get ahold of Tom.
So, I'm sorry for the delay. I called the conference number, conference call number, and it just keeps ringing, so that's probably why Tom cannot get in. So, we can start with three, in which case the applicants would need all three members to vote in the affirmative-
Right.
-in order to have their item approved. Or we can wait a little bit more to see if we can't figure out how to get Tom to call through to the conference phone. Lynn, are you there?
Yeah.
How about, I'm thinking maybe if you hang up and call back in, we'll get you, but then, I don't know, maybe we won't be able to get you in at all, so, so don't hang up yet.
Okay.
Well, he won't answer, we'll see if we can get ahold of him this time. It goes immediately to voicemail. Tom, why don't you call me on this number, and we'll do it through this number instead. I'll text you this as well. Well, I'm surprised he hasn't texted me either. He should probably text me. I don't know. We didn't even call him first. Well, it works for Lynn. Oh, is somebody on? She's still on it, yeah. That's why I didn't know if we wanted to have her, if she hangs up, we won't have three. We'll have three if she stays on. But you would hope that she'd be able to get back in again, but who knows? I thought, I thought it would. Six people could come in by the morning. Conference line or something. Yeah, see, I've never done a conference call from City Hall, and I think there's like a, is there a special number you call first or something? I don't even know how it works. I asked IT, but they said they had no instructions, and they said it would be an admin thing, not an IT thing.
Well, they have admin, yeah. Oh, you're so good at us.
I can't believe we don't have an IT written down description. This is crazy.
Well, I guess we're gonna do that now.
Yeah, apparently. I'm gonna have to learn how to do all this stuff, I have it in my little notebook here. Oh, man. I thought after we got through that last time, I wouldn't have to, like, because I was here at 10 after 3, which is a plenty of time.
You're plenty of time.
He hasn't responded to my text messages either. I'll call him one more time. Hey, Tom, just, we'll just do the meeting through my phone since apparently, I don't think you can get through, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried calling it once I realized you weren't getting through, and that's what it did for me. So, we'll put you over here. It needs to be close to an outlet, because I gotta plug it in. Alright, so, come on.
Okay, Tom, can you talk?
Yeah, yes.
Just keep, just keep talking, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to get you to the microphone.
Alrighty.
Can you say, can you hear him at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I can.
And can you hear us? Jim, can you talk?
Yeah, Tom, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear everybody.
Okay, good, we're, we're ready.
Gotta do what you gotta do, right?
That's right. Thank you, audience. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian.
Well, we have new business here today. We got two, or three items, but...
One second. Lynn, can you also hear Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody ready to go?
We're ready.
Thanks, Mallory. I'm gonna read the first case here. Request SU 20-09 of Melissa Muller at 232 West 15th Street for a special use for pet grooming animal care facility in a C1 district. Table 17.08-1 of the Danport Municipal Code requires a special use for a small animal care facility on the property zone C1 neighborhood, commercial district. Okay, let's see. Is the applicant here? Can I get the staff report on this?
Scott Coops, Community Planning. So, in our review of this site, we look at any potential impact that might be on adjacent property owners or businesses nearby. And in doing our analysis, we determined that there would not be an impact because of the way the petitioner's going to operate the facility, and she can expound on that once she's up to speak about it, but our, our recommendation this time is for approval.
Commissioners, do you have any questions to staff?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
Okay, okay. Okay. Applicant, you wanna step up to the podium and present your case? You can take it off. Can you give us your name, please? Okay.
Um, apologies, this is my first time. Um, I'm going to be operating a small dog grooming salon. Animals won't be kept overnight on the facility, they're appointment-only, and especially through the curbside, no, no owners. Are gonna be allowed in the building, they have to drop off and pick up when the groom is finished. We wouldn't be changing any outside structure, there wouldn't be any issues with sounds, it would all just be operated super small, directly inside the building. We're not changing anything inside, just fresh coat of paint.
Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
No, I thought the application was very clear. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions from me, Jim.
Okay, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none? Anyone in the audience opposed to this request? Seeing none? Applicants, do you have any final comments you'd like to say in front of the board?
Um, is there any expectations I should have? Should it be approved?
No, it's just, you know, your, your comments, if you have any additional information that you want to give us. No?
The animals all have to be up to their vaccine's order from the place where they are.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any board discussion? Lynn, you got any discussion, or?
No.
Tom?
Uh, no, I think, you know, I think it's a pretty straightforward application, pretty well put together. I would, uh, would make a motion to approve.
Okay, okay. Angela, I'm sorry. You got anything?
No.
Okay. Can I ask for a motion?
A motion to approve.
Tom has moved to approve.
I'll second.
Is that a roll call?
Yes, I'll do roll call.
Okay.
Tom? And Mr. Quinn? Lubak?
Yes.
And Cochran?
Yeah.
And Reistroffer?
Yes. Your motions or your variants have been approved. Thank you for coming down and being patient today.
If you have any questions, you can contact me tomorrow.
Do I have to write them?
You're good to go, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, good luck. Our second item on the agenda is request HV 20-08 of Jordan Carstens on behalf of Atlas Real Estate Group at 302 East 6th Street for a hardship variance to construct a 10-unit apartment building which will encroach 15 feet into the required front yard setback along East 6th Street. The structure will be 10 feet from the East 6th Street front lot line. The previous structure at this location was set back approximately 3 feet from the same lot line. Section 17.04.030 point in the table, 17.04-1 require a 25-foot setback from the East 6th Street lot line. Is the applicant here?
I'm with Atlas, but I don't know where Jonathan's at. I thought he was gonna be here, but...
Anybody can speak for the applicant if you're part of the, the team that prepared the plans.
Okay. Yeah.
Hold on for a minute, sorry. We gotta get our staff report from Scott. Scott, could you give us the staff, uh, staff report?
Sure. So, this, Scott Coops, Community Planning, this is a request to, there's two different requests, and we'll, I'll do a presentation for both all in one, and then we'll vote separately.
Right, okay.
The first issue is an encroachment into a front yard. This is where the existing building is now, it's going to be replaced with another apartment building. This apartment, this existing building was also within the encroachment setback of the lot, and I'm gonna go back to my other page. So, there, so the one issue is the encroachment into the south front yard setback. The second issue is the reduction of parking ratio. The ordinance requires 1.5 parking spaces per unit, and there, the applicant is suggesting or proposing a 1.1 parking spaces per unit, which means that there would be four spaces that would, would not, or four units that would not have representation, or four spaces short is probably a better way to say that. So, this site is zoned multiple family, and they're proposing 10 units of multiple family. The encroachment is due primarily to topographic concerns, and as I said, they're gonna provide 11 off-street parking spaces, so that'll bring them four short of what the 1.5 would be required. So, the other thing to, the petitioner's working with is how to accommodate ADA concerns on the site as well, do the topography, and so that is another reason that it makes things difficult to fit the, the number of parking spaces in. This, this area primarily has people who are either students or people who live and work downtown. Many, you know, our downtown district, which is right across the street from this site, they do not have any parking requirements at all because it's, it's an urban dense area where parking is, you know, expected to be on-street. And so, there are no requirements across the street, but because this is zoned multiple family instead of commercial, so even though it's a commercial enterprise as far as, you know, the income earning, but it, it is dwelling, so it does require, our ordinance requires it to be all off-street parking right now. Our new code does allow for commercial businesses to count some of the on-street parking. Are you still there, Tom?
Yep.
So, the first issue, I'll show you the site plan, and I guess I didn't have time to get my pointer with all everything else, but the, oh, here we go. The, the building is, is, is this area here, these are the two stairwells. The parking would be to the rear, and the encroachment. And the encroachment would be to the, into the south property line, or front yard setback. Is someone trying to speak? Okay. This just shows the intersection again where the, this blue, blue structure will be coming down, and that's approximately the location, actually, the new location of the building will be a little bit further to the east. This also shows the on-street parking. Both sides of this block are allowed for parking. The only building that faces that street would be the proposed building. Here's another little map, more into detail about parking. If you can see the yellow, nearly every area here along the street curbs is yellow, and for, and that's where parking is allowed. Obviously, there's driveways and near stop signs is where parking would not be allowed. And further up the hill on Iowa Street, which is the block, the street that's on the east of this, this block face, further up the hill, they do not allow parking, but the lower one-quarter of the block does allow for parking on one side. So, there is quite a bit of on-street parking available, and, you know, these blue, blue areas are here are just where there's private parking, already available. So, there's a number of private parking available in the area for, you know, people of those properties, not necessarily for this apartment, but it just illustrates that there is plenty of parking in the area available. I went to the site on 9/22 and on 9/23, and it was in the morning, it's 7:15 on the one day, and then on the 23rd, I was there at 8:15, and these, these pictures here below show how many cars are there. There's a total of 28 spaces on both sides of this block, and again, the only building that's gonna face the block is the proposed building. Although there is, Tri, Tri-State Electric is right here as well, they, they have employees that park on this street, and in this bottom photo, that's where you can see there's, I think all six of those vehicles are probably most likely from Tri-State Electric. So, you know, on the, in the early mornings, when you would expect demand to be the highest, there's, they've only had 12 and 28 spaces ever filled at that time. This is the other intersection, looking southeast, it shows Tri-State Electric and the wide street here, that also has parking on Iowa Street on both sides as well. This is looking northwest, looking at 6th Street and, and up the hill on Persian. Now, we have the elevation of the property. It shows the, this is the south elevation, this is the elevation that's gonna be visible from 6th Street. It is 6th Street. And these are the side elevations, and this would be the rear elevation where the parking's going to be. We did send out notices to all 13 adjacent properties, and we did receive two comments back. I emailed those last, or two weeks ago when we were gonna have our meeting. I also have handed out the same copies again today. So, Tri-State Electric, they're across the street from this, they're south of 6th Street, they have the building with the blank wall that, that faces this, and again, they do have employees that are parking on that street, and that was the concern, I believe, mostly of the, written in the letter. And the other comment was turned in by the property owner to the west, that's apartment buildings, they have off-street parking, but they also have some people that do park in front of their property from time to time on East 6th Street, although when I was there, the two occasions I was there, there was two or three spaces available there as well. In looking at this, staff looked at the, the area, looked at the downtown and the, the dense nature of this area, the mixed-use nature of this area, looked at the topography at a lot, and the unique circumstances presented there. looked at the topography at a lot, and the unique circumstances presented there. And staff has recommended in favor of both the hardship variance for encroachment, that's HV twenty dash zero eight, and the, also recommended in favor of the parking reduction, which is HV twenty dash zero nine. And that's the end of my report.
Commissioners, if you have any questions for staff?
I don't think you're on talk.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments for staff at this time?
No. I've got a question.
So in the one letter that I read, not from the electric company, but from the citizen, talked about how people were parking in his yard. Did you, or in his backyard? I don't know, let's see.
Yeah, I mean, if, so if someone's parking on somebody else's private property, that, you know, that would be any issue that they need to bring up with the police. The zoning wouldn't be able to, to assist with that, but I mean, I, I didn't see any evidence of a towing business there. And I know John's Towing is, I don't know, it's almost at least a half mile to the north, maybe not, maybe in three-quarters of a mile to the north.
Yeah, that was my other question about the towing, but...
So I, I guess I don't, I've never heard of any complaints about John's Towing working in that area. If they had pictures to submit, I guess I would, you know, that would be helpful to see if it's a problem. But if it is a problem, and it, it's one that has a resolution, and, you know, towing can occur, and at the owner's expense of those vehicles who are parking on private property without permission. So there is a resolution there. I don't know that it directly impacts what we're addressing here today.
We also have an ordinance that prohibits habitually parking in front of the house of another. So if he cannot park, if the homeowner cannot park in his own front parking spaces on the street, he has a recourse there also through ordinance.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a, maybe a small concern. I didn't see that on your recommendations about the ADA parking.
Yeah, they were going to meet ADA parking requirements.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the reason that they need to have a reduction in required parking, because they need to make room for the ADA requirements.
So you're aware of it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Applicant or representative, or come on up and give us your name?
My name's, I take the mask off, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. My name's Dale Lloyd, and I'm with Atlas Real Estate. I thought Jonathan was gonna be here. But, um, yeah, I mean, it's a project we've been working on for some time. It's primarily gonna be Palmer Student Housing. Palmer, I've spoken with them many times over the last year, and they need a much more student housing. They've been expanding in that direction. Also, through speaking with Bruce Berger of the city, we also explained to them how cars coming down Pershing Street are speeding ridiculously coming down that street. It's, it's a hill, and it's rather wide because it was meant for street parking, but there's really no cars that park on that street coming down the hill. So that's another one of the reasons why we wanted to kind of facilitate more street parking was, and so it would slow down traffic coming down that hill, because there's a lot of people walking around there. There's Palmer students on both sides and City View, and then directly right across the street from us, and those other Palmer buildings right there. So that's another reason why we wanted to have more street parking and not necessarily have the one point five parking requirement for everyone. Most students go to school. There's just, we, I, I live downtown as well, and about half of our parking lot gets used, but we, we feel like eleven spots would be more than enough, so. But yeah, that's where, I take any questions.
Any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Nothing from me.
No, that's it?
Okay. All right. And right, right now, the, the blue building right there is all the way up to the street as well, too, so it's kind of awkward. It's an older building. We tried to save it historically, but the tax, it was just...
When, when do you plan on starting construction?
We would like to start in the spring and be done by July or so.
Oh, okay.
Trying to time it right with Palmer trimesters.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none? Anyone in the audience want to speak in opposition of this request? Come on upstairs. Want to give us your name and...
Yes, I'm Matthew Burns, and I'm the property owner immediately to the west of the variance request. And...
Scott, which, which property is? You can...
With the white columns, right there on the corner.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's really three lots. The house is in the middle of two lots. And I did want to correct one thing. It is a single-family residence. It's not, it's not an apartment. First, as the adjacent property owner, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to express my two substantive objections I have with this petition. As I said, I, I'm the owner of two twenty-four East Sixth Street. That's immediately to the west. First off, granting the petitioner a hardship variance for off-street parking will increase already congested street parking along both a bus and a high-traffic-snow route, which is Pershing. That's both a bus and high-traffic-snow route. Approval creates a hardship to the other local residents as well as a risk to both people in property. Within two hundred feet of my residence are six multifamily residents and a business with inadequate parking. I have been effectively denied use of my property at least twenty-two times this year alone by having people consistently parking on my property. And primarily, it's in that parking pad you see just between my house and the property in question. And two years ago, I had to erect a fence along that back alley because on a daily basis, people were parking in my backyard. And they were primarily from that apartment complex immediately to my west. And so I put a six-foot fence along the back, no parking signs. Didn't do anything. I did file several police reports. I contacted the owner of that property. Didn't do anything, so I ended up spending the money and erecting a fence to prevent, physically prevent people from parking. John's Towing, which, you're correct, it's almost three-quarters of a mile up the road. They use immediately street, immediate-street parking between both residents primarily as an overflow lot when they're repairing vehicles. Contacted the police several times, filed, I think, probably about four police reports. They never towed a car away. The only time I saw one car towed away was two weeks ago. Car had been sitting parked immediately next to the blue house for over thirty days. It was tagged, and then it was removed earlier this week. I cannot afford to and should not have to erect fencing and gating around the remainder of my historic house to protect a reasonable use of my property. I contend that the resulting increased parking congestion already along East Sixth Street would constrain fire and emergency response operations and would present a risk to personnel, city personnel, having to operate from the middle of the traffic. And that really came to light in my mind last night as I saw a ambulance go down last night, East Sixth Street, and they had to travel extremely slow. And at nighttime, every parking spot along East Sixth Street is, is filled with cars that, that are parked there. I, the majority of the people, I believe, come from the Palmer apartment, and then some of the overflow from that apartment building at the lower right end of the screen. My second point is that the practical difficulty complained is created by the applicant or their predecessors in interest of the property, and it should be reasonably foreseen to create a difficulty in complying with the ordinance. I contend that the design site plan presented by the owner exceeds the size and scope of what is supported by the property. I also submit that the topography is not unique. It does not present an undue hardship, and that in fact, it does apply to the majority of the adjoining properties. I did take the time this past week to walk through the neighborhood, kind of did a map, and I out, and I identified properties within the area that did have retaining walls. And what it came out to was twenty-seven properties immediately to the east and west along Sixth and Seventh Streets, all shared similar and even more extreme topography. And these properties all used excavation, and there are forty-three retaining walls on these properties that address topography concerns. And I believe all but four of those retaining walls are either concrete or stone. In summary, any hardship is based on a condition created, in my opinion, by the applicant's design plan. Granting a variation would be in derogation of the spirit and clear intent and purpose of this zoning ordinance. Approval would adversely affect and present an injustice to others. It increases congestion on public streets, presents a foreseeable hardship to neighboring property owners like myself. And a second order is the increased risk to residents and city personnel. Conversely, not granting this variance does not prevent improvement to the property in a manner which is reasonable, customary, and consistent with other properties in the area, nor should it present an unjustified expenses in conforming to the ordinance. Unless there's any additional points, the board wants me to clarify on my position. I'd like to thank you for your consideration.
Any board members have any questions for this gentleman?
No, I'm appreciative of the presentation.
Yes.
Yes, hold on, hold on, presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question for Scott. Can I do that? So right now, how many apartments are in that blue existing building?
Um, I'm not, yeah.
Six, okay. Are they two-bedroom, one-bedroom, do you know?
When we purchased it, it was almost completely vacant except for one unit. We got them out and moved it to a shelter.
Okay, so no one's living there, that would be parking there right now, that would... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I have a question. Do you want to come up again?
Yeah.
How many proposed apartments do you have in your new building?
Ten.
Ten?
Yeah.
And you have eleven parking places?
Yeah.
On property?
We'd like to fill eleven, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so, you know, we, we think that's more than enough for somebody living downtown, but, you know, we will have a good amount of parking there.
And you got two for handicap parking, correct?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, I don't know the specifics of the ADA, but architect knows more than me. But, um, yeah, I, I do, we do plan on making it handicap accessible, enough handicap parking on the property.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Is there any further board discussion?
No.
Tom?
I guess the only question I would have, you know, the biggest thing I'm struggling with a little bit is the, the on-street parking, I mean. You know, the city has, you know, standards in place for minimum parking spaces for these types of developments. And I understand it's a, it's a difficult lot to build on, but, you know, can it, can it be done? I mean, can, with a little bit of additional grading, retaining walls, things like that, can it, can, can additional parking spaces, is it possible, I guess, to, to create more onsite parking to, to relieve that congestion from the street? Has, has it, has it been looked into? Has the developer looked into possibilities of, of meeting the city standards?
Is that a question for the applicant?
I, I guess it would be, yeah, I guess that does need a question. Just have we exhausted all of our options regarding, you know, making onsite parking available to meet city, city standards?
From my understanding, it is a pretty, uh... From my understanding, it is a pretty tight fit. Again, I'm not the architect, but I, I can't speak exactly for them in saying they've exhausted every option that they've had available. We've been planning to do something with that property for two years. I know it'd be, because, because of the grade, it'd be hard to get fifteen spots in there, so.
I'm sorry, I was having trouble, having trouble here in the...
It's my understanding that because of the grade slope, it would be extremely hard to get fifteen parking spots into that area.
Did you hear that second time, Mr. Quinn?
Uh, I, I think so, I caught most of it, yeah.
Yeah, he said it, because of the grade and slope, it'd be hard to get the fifteen spaces in there.
And how many more spaces are required versus what's being shown now? I know you say one point five, one point six spaces per unit.
So fifteen spaces would be required, meeting the code. They're proposing to have eleven spaces in there.
And how many would they require, Scott, fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen required and eleven proposed. So four short.
Okay.
Any other, okay, thank you, sir. Usually we don't give a final comment, but come on up if you want.
I'm actually trying to help them and, and answer the last question, at least from my perspective. And when I read through the, this is Matthew Burns again, for, for the board members on the phone. In the original, original submission of the variance request, and that's why I went on, on how many retaining walls are within the immediate area, is part of the variance request is they said that it would be a hardship and would be too difficult based on the topography and the elevation. And if you look at their picture, I'm only assuming because I'm not the architect, but it looks like immediately to the east of where the planned building is, the ground does slope up into the adjoining property. And from my, what I read and what I perceived from their variance request was that it would be difficult with draining and retaining walls to make additional parking on that side. And so that's why I went around the neighborhood to see how all the other houses and properties in, in the area dealt with, because we all share the same topography. And if you look at my house, you know, immediately to the east, right in front of it, you can't see it because of some trees, but I've got about a fifteen-foot retaining wall in front of there. I've got a retaining wall that goes across the front of my property, and in my backyard, I've got another retaining wall. So I have, you know, four retaining walls on my property alone. But I believe there is space when you look at their layout of their plan, and they talked to it in their variance request, that they weren't able to, to do that because of the cost of the retaining wall and putting in drainage systems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have any more board discussion on this?
No.
No? Okay. Ask for a motion. Scott, do we need a, should we go through the second case before we make the motion on one? Or do you want this separate?
I would make a motion on the first case, the request for the hardship variance to encroach into the south.
Okay, okay. Well, can I get a motion for item B on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the first, I think this is the setback that you're asking for. The setback.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Scott, want to give the vote?
Any further board discussion?
I'm sorry. Any further board discussion? Seeing none?
No.
Or hearing none?
Okay. Layback?
Yes.
Cochran?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Ricehaw?
Yes. Now we move on to the second request. Request HV twenty dash zero nine of Jonathan Carson's on behalf of Atlas Real Estate Group at three oh two East Sixth Street. oh two E six street for a hardship variance to provide eleven off-street parking spaces for a ten-unit apartment building at a ratio of one point one parking spaces per unit. Table seventeen point ten dash two requires one point five parking spaces per unit of a multifamily dwelling. Appken, I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, staff, can you give your report, please?
Um, I combined both reports.
Okay, yeah, you did, okay. I want that on the record for, okay. Uh, Appken, you want to address your second request?
This is for the parking reduction from fifteen parking spaces to eleven parking spaces.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, what, what did you guys want me to explain specifically?
Why you, uh, want to change it from, uh, the required fifteen to eleven?
Oh, a, as I said before, um, it's really hard to work this project with fifteen parking spots because of the grade, and we just, we have a limited amount of space. And, um, we just didn't feel like it was necessary to have fifteen, um, parking spots for a ten-unit building. From talking with Palmer, the university, uh, half their students don't even have a car on campus, so we don't even feel like eleven of the parking spots will be utilized whatsoever. We feel like about half of them will be used, so that's why we, um, we're seeking to do eleven because it would, it'd fit, and fifteen wouldn't fit, from my understanding. I mean, times the architects have switched around, we've tried to face the project towards Sixth Street, um, or towards Pershing Street, then we switched it towards Sixth Street, and it's just a real limited amount of space, so it's mostly a spacing issue.
Have you tried to make the building smaller?
Yeah, we originally had a thirty-two unit building planned for the site.
Oh.
Um, so, yeah, we've gone from, uh, thirty-two with Estis Construction, and we're doing another construction company, Saxon, same architect, Streamline, but, um, we reduced it from thirty-two to, uh, ten units, so significantly made it smaller.
Are there any questions from the board to the?
No. No.
And Tom, can you hear?
Um, no, I just, uh, I just feel that there's, uh, I feel like there's opportunities for additional parking spaces onsite. We got a little bit creative, that, that's all, um, certainly not as civilian here, but it seems like there's opportunities there. But no, I, I don't have any other comments or questions.
Okay, any other board member? You know, Tom, I'll ask you a question, do you feel that, uh, there's room for fifteen parking places going with the city, uh, ordinance? I don't know if he heard me, what? Tom, did you hear what I said?
I'm sorry, Jeff, no, I didn't, uh, I didn't realize you were talking to me.
Do you have some reservations about the, uh, the eleven parking places, uh, from, down from fifteen that's required?
Um, I, I do, I just think that, you know, there's, there's city standards for a reason, you know, for the more, the more traffic that you put on the street, the more, you know, more congestion there is, there's, obviously, there's opportunities for install removal, things like that, that becomes, becomes issues and, uh, you know, neighboring residents and businesses, I, I, you know, would prefer to see, uh, someone get a little creative and figure out how to get some more parking spaces, you know, if there's an opportunity to, you know, that driveway that connect, connects to the alleyway to the, to the north, you know, is there some, is there an opportunity there for two or three end-to-end parking type spots, you know, to be, I don't know how much of the property that they own versus that house to the, that existing home to the door, and so there could be some space restrictions there, um, to do that, but it just seems, that's my only reservation, uh, is just, you know, the more, the more, the more cars off the street, the better.
I, I will say that, um, our new code does not allow for, um, a dead-end parking lot like we used to in the past, so, um, with it being one-way parking, there has to be a way out, and so they would need to have that exit to the alley, um, because our ordinance doesn't allow a, a dead end with no way to turn around. The other thing to keep in mind, I, you know, I don't know how much it may or may not play into your decision, that's up for you to decide, but, um, all the apartment buildings in Crescent Warehouse, which are immediately adjacent to this site, every one of them has received parking, uh, waivers to reduce the parking, and, um, I think all those businesses or all those buildings are now full, they've re, reconverted them from warehouses to, to now lofts. And there, we've never had any parking complaints about lack of parking for all those apartments there. I think there's at least four, maybe even five, or five or six buildings there now that have been rehabbed.
Did, did his point about the building to the north of the new ten-unit building we're building, we, we own that as well too, the duplex, we're currently remodeling that, and what he's talking about fitting more spots in, we're putting four parking pads there off the alley to go to the duplex. So there'll be four parking spots for the duplex right there, and then the eleven that we're planning for the ten-unit building. So we don't really have much other room to use that other property next to that duplex, because there's already four parking spots being, um, constructed there, so. I, I, I think, like I said, we have a lot of stuff going on, so I'm talking about it, it's hard to remember. I, I think the, and another thing was, they, they could fit maybe twelve, thirteen without having to re-go back and maybe scale the building size down, but then we'd have to do away with the green space, and that was a big thing with Palmer. Um, we want, we're kind of putting a gazebo or grill, um, just a nice, uh, a dog place, so.
I think you, you got a real, there's an ordinance set in place.
Yeah.
And you're asking us for a variance, and, and that's what one of the commissioners, have concerns, and, and I have concerns about the parking, if you build a, something, you should have adequate parking. So that's my feeling, and, uh, so, okay.
Yep, yeah, no, I, I completely understand, we're right on the border of downtown, so that's why we scaled the project down significantly because of the parking issues.
Something we just said is that there is some place on that property, you chose to do it, use it for green space as opposed to parking place, is that correct? Like a dog park, is that?
My understanding is that, that that area that they're going to be using for that isn't accessible with the parking lot, I mean, it would, it's not usable for the parking lot.
Okay.
Um, the other thing to consider, and, and again, it's up to you, is, um, my understanding is that fitting in those four extra spaces would cost about the same amount as what it's going to cost to put in the parking lot right now with eleven spaces, so it, it is a significant increase in, um, the, the cost to, to make it happen, that, and, and I haven't seen anything penciled out that actually fits fifteen, I don't know that it even can make it and meet, meet our code requirements, I, um, haven't seen that, I don't think it, I can't speak to that, I guess, I, I haven't seen them try to do fifteen, um, it would be tough, I would think.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the board members?
No.
Okay.
Nothing from me, Jim.
Okay. Does there anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that opposes this request?
And as more clarification, my original comments were tied to this specific variance request, not the setback a, at all. And, and I did want to expound one of the points, uh, brought up by the requister is, that's one of the issues, because in that transitory area between downtown and this, you know, multifamily residential zoned area, um, a, and I'm one of the few single-family house owners i- in the area, is at nighttime, that parking is congested, and twenty-two times this, this year alone, I've had cars that have parked in my lower parking pad. I'm not going to call the police, I'm not going to tow someone's car away from the area, but I feel the lack of four additional parking spaces by their design that doesn't fit or meet the ordinance from the start will impact my property, and I will be forced to spend money that I don't have to put gating and fencing to physically prevent people from parking on my property and preventing my reasonable use of my own property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appken, you got any final comments? Okay. Any more further board discussion?
Okay, further from me.
Seeing none? I asked for a motion to approve item C on the agenda on request HV twenty-nine.
I need to approve, Jim, this is Lynn.
I'll second.
Roll call, Scott?
Uh, any further discussion before we make the motion?
Excuse me, any further board discussion? Hearing none?
Cochran?
Yes.
Quinn? Layback?
Yes.
And Rice Traffer?
No.
So the motion fails two to two.
And what's their alternative now?
Um, if the petitioner wants to speak with me tomorrow, we can discuss.
Okay.
What their options are, one option would be to request a reconsideration, but that would take, um, a motion from someone who voted it down today.
Yes.
To make that motion. Uh, that request has to be made at this meeting or at the next meeting. The other option would be, that I can think of off the top of my head, is, um, he can, you know, he can take us to, you know, he can, um, wait a year, uh, or he can significantly change the request some, or potentially, these parking spaces could be, uh, provided on a leased site nearby. I don't know if that would change your minds or not, it technically wouldn't meet the requirement for our code, but it, it, I don't know, maybe that's substantially different, I would think, if he had something lined up. Uh, the other thing would be to, um, take it to district court.
You know, Scott, speaking as the one that was in the negative, I would like to see further discussion with, with the applicant, with you, to work something out. I, I'd just like to get the parking a little bit closer than what we got now, that's my feeling.
Yeah, I can certainly, uh, talk to the applicant to see, uh, what kind of strategies we might have, um, to come up with something.
Yes, Chairman, do I, can I make that motion to have you look into it with the applicant?
Uh, not, my understanding is no.
Okay, somebody else has to?
Well, the, the motion is already voted on, so we can't make any additions to it at this time.
Okay, well, I'd like to talk to you.
But I will certainly talk with.
Okay, okay. So Appken, you'll get together with, uh, Scott and our, and the staff about this, and? Okay. Is there? If no other business, I call for a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everyone's patience.